All right, Andy.
Oh, that's me.
We need Philip to kick it off.
Hey, welcome, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Hi, Philip.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
I guess. Hey. I'd like to go ahead and call to order the town of Frazier's regular meeting, January 5th, 2022, first meeting of the year at 6:00 PM. Can I please have a roll call?
Andy Miller.
Arnold Quinn.
Katie Souls. Eileen.
Eileen's muted, so is Katie Fisher.
Katie Fisher.
And Eileen's there as well, once she gets unmuted. I have an approval, a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then for those of you in our audience, we're getting ready to go into an executive session. So you're actually going to. Well, we're going to put you in a waiting room and then let you back in once we're out of the executive session. So can I have a motion for that executive session, please?
I move to enter into an executive session for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 2464024B, and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 2464024E regarding litigation, including Special Counsel Andy Nathan, Town Manager Ed Cannon, Town Clerk Antoinette McVay, Town Planner Catherine Trotter, Assistant Town Manager Michael Brack.
We need to add also Ashley Schlegel to that.
And also Ashley Schlegel.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And generally, we have our attorneys give up. Why it doesn't have to be a recorder or something? Is there? Sorry, I don't know if our attorney's there or not.
No, Kent is not here, but I would recommend that because of the nature of the discussion, that it not be recorded.
Right, we generally have our attorney say that it need not be recorded because it's attorney-client privilege.
Sounds good to me.
So.
That's correct.
I guess I'm not an attorney. Okay.
Is that Andy Nathan on there? Maybe he could say it.
I know, that's what I was hinting at.
Well, anybody can say it.
Doesn't mean as much if it's not coming from an attorney. Okay, let's go.
All right.
So whoever's not.
Jan is our attorney.
Jan is?
Yeah.
Is she a partner with?
Amanda's not, though. I don't know who Amanda is.
All right.
Yeah.
Start video. We're live. We're gonna have a little fun. Do you want us to wear a mask? Let's hope it's open.
Okay, Michael, are we back in live for everybody?
Yes, Mayor, we are good to go.
Perfect, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We are now at the consent agenda area of our agenda, which includes the minutes from December 1st. Resolution 2022-0101, official posting location. Resolution 2022-0102, the rendezvous license agreement. Resolution 2022-0103, Lot 1 and Lot 2, Elk Creek condominiums. Grand Park acceptance and surety reduction, and Resolution 2022-0104, Elk Creek filing number one, final acceptance and surety reduction. Can I have a motion for that?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Didn't quite sound like enough votes, but. Okay, now we're at discussion and possible action, East Grand Middle School Robotics Club funding request.
Mr. Mayor, I'll speak on this. We had had a request that came in from the East Grand Middle School. They were requesting $500 to help out with their robotics club. I had asked Antoinette to reach out to the to the the school to see if we can get some representation, tell a little bit more about this. I don't know if it's the weather or whatnot, but they're not here to do that. Typically, this would be something that I would look at our budget and see if we have available funds, and you know, $500 request isn't going to break the $19 million budget. But because of the nature of this, I thought it was a good idea that that we get those voices in front of the Board of Trustees, so they can explain to that, and the trustees could have an opportunity to show their support. We can either rule on that without their presence, or we can put this off till another meeting when they can attend.
Pleasure of the board. I think we should just go ahead and approve it. I think it's it's good
Yeah.
for the community and for for those kids, so.
I think it's good that we're doing something with these schools.
I agree. I really liked the handwritten note as well. In the packet, that was really nice.
Sounds like you make a motion, Katie. Katie, you want to make a motion?
Katie Fisher?
Yes, you.
Okay. I've never done one before. I I I motioned to approve the $500 to the East Grand Middle School Robotics Club.
Very. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thanks. We're now at Resolution 2022-0105, First Amendment to Grand Park Drive Improvement Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak on this one. One of our ongoing struggles that we've been having for some time is the acceptance of the the Grand Park Drive, the King's Crossing Connector, and Old Victory Road is part of, this is part of the lawsuit agreement, which led to the Second Amendment to the annexation agreement, not ours, but Winter Park's. It led to a an IGA between Winter Park ourselves to work together with Grand Park Drive to construct these roads for several reasons, one of which that I'm most aware of is that is to close the Atgrede Crossing of the railroad track there, which is highly unsafe. All the construction is complete for this season. There's an extensive punch list of items that did not meet town specifications as identified in the in the 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 agreement. So what we have done is we've been working with Mr. Lipscomb, and we've been working with Winter Park, quite frankly, since ever since I've been here about getting this road complete and constructed and accepted. This First Amendment to Grand Park Drive resolves a a legal hurdle that that we were facing. Our improvement agreement, original improvement agreement did not really specify things like surety for for those, for any kind of punchless items. And then this three-part agreement between Cornerstone, Winter Park, and Frazier for those settlement roads. We needed an agreement so that we could we could resolve and accept those because there's more than just one party there. Plus, there's also some conditions about easements and who has priority of easements and so forth that we had to work out. This document here was actually proposed by Grand Park Development, by Mr. Lipscomb, thanks. Allows us to bridge that gap that we had with our current improvement agreement. It allows us to accept the roads that will predominantly be in Frazier. There is still a need, and if you read the language of this, there's still a need for that other agreement, the three-way agreement between Winter Park, Cornerstone, and Frazier that will be executed. This particular amendment requires that that separate agreement be signed first, and then we'll assign this one, but it gives us the authority to accept those roads. We still have a punch list. We've identified surety amounts. There's maybe one or two items on the punch list that's still a little bit in question, but I think we can work through that fairly easily. In fact, we've already, I think Russell's already proposed a fix for one, the type C inlet there. But it also allows us to identify that surety so that we can we can ensure that those that those improvements are being constructed, commit our standards. So this is something that we've been back and forth on. We're real close on the other agreement. And quite frankly, I think we can all iron this out within the next couple of days, in my opinion, but we're happy with the punch list. We're happy with what's been done. Clark's been working with this. There were some problems with the road, which Clark has corrected. And we're ready to move on and get this road fully accepted by us and by Winter Park. Take over responsibility for the maintenance of the road under the preliminary acceptance. Still have a clawback back for the for the punch list items, both on our side and also Winter Park's side. This opens the door for transit, for residential, for access to this road. And it's overdue, and it needs to be completed, and you know, I'm sorry it took this long, but some of these, some of these, the overlaying legalities of, you know, with improvement agreements, this annexation and the IGA and so forth, it complicated it to a great degree, but we think that this is the right way to go. Again, Clark, appreciate you putting together this this proposal because it did streamline a lot of a lot of what we're have been struggling with. So there's not much to it. It's a short read, but it does give us a little bit more guidance by identifying the 100% construction diagrams for for all three of the roads. I think one of those sections of road was originally eliminated in the first improvement agreement. This covers that. Again, this is something that we've been working on for some time, and I think it's ready to come to the board for a vote.
Just a quick question. So this was posted on the agenda Friday, and then this, just a little bit more about the timeline, there was this addition here just yesterday, or?
I'm sorry?
There was a change to the agenda item yesterday?
The one that was originally posted did not have the surety amounts listed.
Okay.
But in in our procedures for getting agendas posted, we felt it was important, at least to get that on the agenda. So we put out the amended agenda, which which updated those surety amounts, but also included the Exhibit A and B, which is which is that punch list as well. So that that amendment actually gave the board a complete package to vote on as opposed to just a suggestion of a package.
And then Russell agreed with the surety amounts, obviously, or?
Yeah, we we used Russell's amounts, and like I said, we've been back and forth with Clark over over that punch list. We've had meetings in field. I think we still owe another meeting to Clark on about one. I think we've got a path forward. It has to do with one of the struggles that, you know, we're so we're rule-based, you know, and we've got we've got improvement agreements, we've got construction drawings, and we try to follow those to the T, and if there's changes, there's process for the change. Change was made, process wasn't followed. We put a suggestion in so that just give us the new diagram. We can we can approve that change and move on, strike that off of that punch list. I think the punch list surety amount was like $10,000 for I had to do some riprath and then for storing brandage. We've already gone through and eliminated and agreed on other items that was on the punch list that we've said we can live with this or we can't. So I think that's just the final item.
Thank you.
Okay. And if we do meet in the next couple of days, because we still need a little bit more time to work out that last agreement, that three-party agreement. We were in communication today with with not with Scott Albertson, with Pat Wilson, who is the attorney of the Winter Park. And by all indications, the only thing hanging up now is still just that remaining punch list item. So when we get that resolved, I would like to be able to 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 strike that item off of the that punch list and reduce the surety amount by that $10,000. And I don't know if we need to come back to the board for that, if we can just make that a condition approved in this, that we can make those pending changes. Would that be sufficient for you, Clark?
Yeah, hi, Clark Lipscomb. Happy New Years. How are you guys? There's there's a few items on the punch list that we're unclear on still, and we're still waiting for a meeting with Russell to go over those specifically. I know one of them did get cleared up today. It's actually related to Cousins Dish that he had on as a public improvement. That's not a public improvement, but is on the plans, and we'll stay on there because it's kind of, it will be an improvement we will make to the Cousins Dish at some point in the future. The Cousins Dish goes through here in an easement, as you guys probably well realize. And that's kind of an important component, not only to town of Frazier, but to our project as well, and and it's been well-designed and well-built. We'll have an outlet somewhere on that far south end at some point, which is what they were calling out as a type C inlet, which it is not. So that that, I think, was resolved earlier today. There are still some questions that we have that we've requested a meeting with your Town and Public Works Director, and we're still waiting for that meeting. You know, as an example, you know, minor stuff, it is preliminary acceptance. Typically, after this IAs done, it will be a normal process with the staff to handle preliminary acceptance, and then final typically comes to the town board. So I believe you will be able to have the latitude necessary with your staff to make adjustments as we finish items on the punch list. This punch list was, you know, there was a lot of items in late fall. They were reduced to a very small amount of items, mainly because, you know, we still had subcontractors around that had performed some of the work, and they were minor things. They were all pretty pretty easy things to address valve extensions on water valves and just simple stuff. So that that everything that could get handled, got handled. And we have an asphalt paving matter on density, road's perfectly drivable. But we're not going to be accepting of the asphalt from our subcontractor, nor is the town that's on the list, and that contractor will be redoing the top lift. It's not a huge amount of asphalt, but the top lift of asphalt in the section that did not make the densities that we require for our roads. But again, it's perfectly drivable, won't interfere with anything now, and there's surety with the town, and that we are in agreement with. And the contractor that did the work is understanding that they will be milling that top two inches off and repaving what now is a roughly nine-inch section of asphalt because of the prior rebuild. So I think we got a great road. I think the items that are there are largely cosmetic, not functional in terms of safety or other aspects. Landscaping, for instance, will be done next spring, topsoil to get all placed. Minor things, you know, but the things that are important to us. And yes, I think we're very close. I have not talked to Scott today on the agreements. I don't know what Pat and him, where they stand. But I think we're very, very close to being able to wrap all of this up, and frankly, I mean, we we were ready, and one of those things opened months ago. I proposed this modification, the improvement agreement, months and months ago, I think four or five months ago, so it's long overdue. And it was the fastest, best solution, frankly, and you know, remember, we typically provide surety when we're doing subdivisions and go sell lots. There is no subdivision or anything being sold related to these roads. Okay, these roads were part of our overall agreement, or the annexation agreement, part of an agreement with Winter Park, and a very, very long-fought battle on an underpass that everybody ultimately really wants and needs that we built and put a lot of time and effort and energy into. It is well, well overdue. I appreciate Ed's effort getting us there, and you know, quite honestly, no offense to lawyers, but too many lawyers involved, and too little practical common sense being utilized to get us to where this road could just be open to the public. So we want it open. We wanted it open in October after the second repave was handled. So I think we're there, and the things that are on the list, barring another breakout of some other kind of COVID, we should be able to get that stuff finished relatively early next year. And again, it's landscaping and things that frankly are not going to be town responsibilities under the agreements that we've worked out in the big median, the big island of the roundabout, and yeah, so we would like to get the first roundabouts in Grand County open to the public. And I hope I never build another one. But yes, thank you. I think we are closed, but I do think with this agreement, you should, I hope you should have the latitude to be able to, for me and Russell and you to work together to clarify and just clean up the last few items on the punch list.
Even even if there's still some lingering things that get resolved between the time that construction starts, we have the latitude to come in and say, okay, that's no longer needed. It's just a punch of something that we check off.
Yep.
Earlier.
Yeah, that's typically how we've done these in the past, and then when it's all finished, finished, done, we'll do a final acceptance. Anyway, this basically uses your SIA, but turns it into just an IA, because there's no subdivision related to.
Yeah, and that that corner up there is pretty hard to turn at this point, coming over the tracks when the bus is coming down. I mean, it works.
You're talking about in Winter Park?
Yeah.
The old, yeah.
The old.
We agree. We were trying to get that open
Yeah.
well before winter, but so, yeah, we we want this open, Winter Park wants it open, and I know, you know, Frazier's doing what it can to try to get things finished up and wrapped up. Just maybe a few too many lawyers and too much paperwork. So in any case, let's let's try to get it done and and get it open to the public so everybody can start using it and enjoying it. Yeah. Off our plate. Be good to have some things finished up.
Thank you, Clark.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that was my presentation. If there's any questions for me or Clark?
Is this a resolution we need to approve to get moving forward on?
This resolution allows the mayor to sign the agreement once those certain conditions are established. We can add a modification that we can make pending change to the to the punch list items and therefore reduce the surety before that's become an effect. But in any case, before the acceptance as a road, we'll have to have that other three-way agreement signed, and like I say, we're very close to that. I, the indication I got was the last remaining obstacles appeared to be the the that punch list. We'd also need to get that surety in hand. We sign these things, we open the roads, we take over the maintenance of this, and then we wait for spring when the construction season starts back up so we can finish off the remaining punch list items.
And that's all in this document. That's awesome. Can I ask one question that's just kind of on the side? Will this, will you be able to open up through the Lions Gate this year, once this gets opened up?
Yeah, so what we did, and it was Ed's suggestion, I don't know, back in October. So obviously, we paved in construction and paved way more than what was intended or required under the settlement agreement with Winter Park associated with the underpass. Okay, so we built a lot more road system that was all designed. Some of it goes back to the Carolyn Lane days, a long, long, long time ago. In any case. In any case, because of the way it all came together, there was a request to, to combine and, and kind of meld the plans, I'm going to say. So we have Grand Park Drive, which goes up under the underpass. We have King's Crossing Extension. That was an easy little short plan. So those are two plans. And then we had several other plans, which we melded into one that now goes all the way through Old Victory Road, which takes it to Lions Gate, has the Village Roundabout, portion of Main Street that ties over behind the bowling alley. So all of that paved work, Katie, is part of, will be now under this IA in that plan set. And in addition to that, the section of Old Victory Road that's not yet paved, that is between Mountain Willow Drive and American Willow Drive, that is in this plan set to be approved by the town noted as to be constructed in the future. So that that corridor is specifically identified now, clearly laid out, designed, and could be constructed once we get that figured out. So this will have basically this entire corridor through to Lions Gate, King's Crossing, and around to behind the bowling alley, all of that will be wide open. Do you agree with that, Ed? Once we get the acceptance of the preliminary acceptance.
For the most part, I do.
Just thinking about moving traffic off of Highway 40 for locals.
We're thinking about that, too.
Yeah, that's such a, that's a huge service to our community. I support this. And I'm looking forward to this moving ahead. But I don't think I should make a motion to anybody else needs to.
I'm, I'm sorry, Katie, did you, did you see her making a motion?
I, I will, but I was going to see if there was anyone else that needed to speak about it or have questions.
Anybody else?
I'd like to make a resolution to approve or a motion to approve Resolution 20220105, first minute, to Grand Park Drive Improvement Agreement.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
One step closer.
Election presentation by Antoinette.
So Frazier has, you know, our bi-annual elections. So next year, or this year, 2022 would be the Frazier elections held on April 5th. We did get to cancel the last elections because we didn't have more candidates than we had open seats for the trustees. So this year, we do have three trustee positions that will be ending in April, and that is Katie Souls, Katie Fisher, and Andy Miller. So we will have those three trustees up on the ballot. And currently, we actually started the election process just yesterday. Ballot or petitions are now available to be circulated. That started yesterday, and that can be circulated through January 24th for people that are interested. And one of the questions that seems to be coming up a lot is how many signatures are required for a petition? And it's 10 valid signatures. Always recommend getting more in case any of those are not valid on your petition. We are going to hold a candidate workshop next, next Tuesday, January 11th at 6:00 PM. We have decided to go ahead and move that to a virtual platform rather than in person. And that will be an opportunity for people to attend. We're going to have department heads just kind of give a high-level overview of what's going on at the town and what their departments do. And Ed will speak to what the, really the trustee's role is within the town. So that again is next Tuesday. I am handing out flyers. We'll have them at the post office. I do have them posted online on our website, so you can find that link to that virtual platform. This will be a mail ballot election. And then the town clerk is the designated election official for the Town of Frazier unless appointed to another person. Does anybody have any questions? I did put abbreviated election calendar in the packet. This is really high level of what the public would want to know.
So these all for your terms?
They're all for, they're all for your terms. We don't have any two-year terms in the town. Yep.
And what do you have to do to qualify to be on the, to sign the petition?
So you have to be a registered elector. So that means a registered lecturer is a person on or before the day of the election is 18 years of age, is a United States citizen, is a resident of the municipality, and has resided in the state of Colorado 22 days immediately preceding the election and is registered to vote in the town. So that would be a registered elector who could sign your petition.
And to register, to, to register in town as a, as a voter, what are the qualifications for that?
So that's pretty much, that's what, that's what, that's really what qualifies you to be
A voter also.
A voter also. Yeah, well, to vote in the town, you have to be a US citizen, you have to be 18 years of age. On or before you can vote, you can register to vote the day of an election up to and including the date of to vote. And then you have to reside within the, the state of Colorado.
Yeah, I think you have to be a resident of the municipality.
To, yes, yes, absolutely.
She did say that. Antoinette did say you have to be a resident of the Town of Frazier.
Yeah. No length of residency requirement.
22 days. You have to reside in the state of Colorado for 22 days immediately preceding the election.
Not any length of residency in the Town of Frazier. When you move here, you can change your residency and register to vote.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. And I do have petitions available and ready for anybody to come by at any time to pick those up.
Have you picked them up yet?
We've had three picked up.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And just to piggyback, the, the workshop that we're going to hold next Tuesday night, I call it Government 101. It's just so people get an introduction to what local government is. What, what does municipal, what's a statutory town? What is the role of a mayor, trustee, a town manager, staff? What are some of the the laws governing Open Meetings Act, Open Records Acts? How do we process that? And then we're going to give an overview of, of town-specific operations. And we'll, and we'll introduce them to what municipal finance is all about. Because municipal finance is a lot different than private sector or personal budgeting. Department heads will give an overview of their scope and responsibility. And we typically end, or in my past, I typically ended that with an open invitation for the candidates to reach out to me and my staff, in order to, if they want to do a deeper dive. But we'll also give a, an update on some of the projects and initiatives that the town is currently working on. It's just a familiarity of, and it's a 30,000-foot picture of what the town is about.
That's at 6:00 PM?
Great, thanks, Antoinette. Any other questions? Okay, it's exciting that there's, there's three that have been picked up. So I don't know if it's the three that are in the room there, up for reelection or, or somebody else. So that's exciting. It's always good to have interest in people running for the board. Next.
I haven't picked mine up yet.
Me neither.
Oh, wow. Excellent.
Neither.
Ooh, it'd be a tightly contested race.
That's great.
Okay.
I guess we move back in the house of Frazier.
Oh, that's right.
You just got to move in.
I often say the best favor that anyone did for me was Eileen Waldo running against me many years ago. And I have zero intention of doing what you guys do, but thank you all for your service.
Okay, great. Next is Water, Waste Water Advisory Committee, ex officio member appointment.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As you know, in the, the meeting in December, we changed the code about the Water, Waste Water Committee and changed it to Water, Waste Water Advisory Committee. We also reduced the membership to five members, reducing the amount of board members from four to two. So right now, help me if I'm wrong, I believe those four members are Eileen and who else?
Eileen, Philip, Brian, and Parnell.
And Parnell. We need to reduce that number to two. So that's what our purpose is tonight, is to figure out which two, whether the, out of the existing four, if there's any other members.
I, I would volunteer to, to step off that.
We got our two volunteers.
So it looks like Philip and Eileen.
No, I volunteered to step off.
Okay, so only Philip and Eileen then?
No, Brian, Brian.
No, I'm just, I'm just giving Philip a hard time. Well, we'd need that in the form of a motion.
Are, are you two okay with staying on that, Eileen and Brian?
Brian's not here.
Yeah.
Brian must be okay because he's not here yet.
I hear no objections from Brian.
About Eileen, she's.
I'm fine.
I would move then to accept the kind of offer to, to leave the board from the Water, Waste Water Committee from Parnell Quinn and, and our mayor, Philip Vanderdell.
Leaving.
So the official motion needs to be, we appoint
We appoint.
Eileen Waldo and Brian Servendik.
So I would move to appoint Eileen Waldo and Brian Servendik to be members of the Water, Waste Water Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thanks for volunteering, Eileen and Brian.
Yep.
Yep.
Especially Brian.
Yeah. That's what, hopefully he listens. That's what happens when you don't show up to the meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Get voluntold.
Okay, we are in open forum. This is when the public gets a chance to address the board. You got three minutes, so you can, I don't know if, I can't see who's there now, obviously. So if you're, and let's do the people in the town hall first, if there's anybody there. Okay, and then digitally raise your hand online if you would like to make comments to the board. Hey, I am not seeing any hands being raised, so we are now at updates.
Mr. Mayor, if I can start, like, there's two items that I'd like to talk about. One of those that I would like to discuss may require an action by the board. We felt that this was appropriate because of the timing. The first I'd like to talk about is, is our COVID protocols. As we indicated several times tonight, and you see me wearing a mask, there's been a dramatic increase in COVID, the spread of COVID in Grand County. Currently, Grand County is listed as extremely high risk for, for infection. You know, we had a nice little break there where things kind of relaxed. But apparently, this Omicron variant has, has sparked a new, a new wave of infections. And with the tourist season hitting Winter Park, the four hotspots in Colorado happen to be Route County, Pittins County, Summit County, and Grand County, which is where your, your major resorts are. To put this into perspective, I just found out earlier this week that the Town of Winter Park had an employee who was, who had COVID, didn't quite know it, walked around and managed to spread that throughout their town hall, which, which dramatically impacted how they're, they're doing their operations. Plus, they'd already had two snowplow operators who were diagnosed with COVID, which reduced their ability to combat winter storms like what we're, we're seeing right now. Our former Finance Director, Beth, we have agreed to keep her on to do some transition to, to help out with some of the workload. She has COVID. She worked closely with Becky in, in finance, and Becky is self-quarantined, waiting a test result. And all of us pretty much here have had exposure to that. So the question we have is, is how do we keep people safe? How do we keep doing our operations? And, and, and what, what are those protocols we need to put in place? I've already instituted a few protocols at the, the operational level. For example, I've just instituted a mask mandate today. We are going to require appointments. Pretty much, if you want to come to town hall and conduct business, we're going to require that you make an appointment, that you do the work online or via telephone. Some of the same protocols that we exercised in the past, like the, the ring doorbell that we had at the front door, we're going to put that back in place. We're limiting group participation in group meetings, trying to push those all to virtual. At least on the staff level. But what I want to specifically talk about with the board was my recommendation that we return to some of the protocols that we had during, been the previous wave of COVID. And my recommendation would be to require masks at our public meetings, to limit our participation at public meetings, to utilize our virtual platform. I know it's cumbersome, but you know what? We worked out the bugs over the past two years. And apparently, tonight's a good example. We've got three of our trustees who are either self-quarantining or half COVID and are not in attendance tonight. Still allows you to conduct your business. It allows us to keep the town moving forward and keeping the town working and operating. But we have some, some issues. I've mentioned before, late last year, when the budget hearings that our staffing level was set 75% because of vacancies we had just from hiring people. With Beth gone, you know, we're actually closer to two-thirds of our staffing is available, you know, and we're trying to do more with less or do the same level with less. We really can't afford to lose snowplow operators. And if we do have snowplow operators and conditions arise, we'll be requiring sick employees to come back to work to help us clear the roads. This is something that Winter Park has done as well. But what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is to get the board's thoughts on moving to more of a virtual platform, requiring face masks at our, our board meetings. We were going to rearrange the seating here, we'll limit, like we did in the past, of public participation to six people in person. We've even thought about ideas about if we have, like I said tonight, like a full agenda. Maybe times where it might be more advantageous for us to actually put some timelines so that we can have a rotation of people through if they need to make presentations and so forth. But that, that's not that important. That's just something we've, we've, we've explored a lot of options. But Mr. Mayor and the board, if you're okay with that, I would like to implement these procedures for board meetings. And that would cover the Planning Commission, the Water, Waste Water Advisory Committee, the PAC, any boards of adjustment, any of those public meetings would, would be pushed primarily to virtual. We've instituted our, our social distancing, we'll set up the room here so that we can allow that. And if you're okay with that, we will get that word out tomorrow.
Board, and from that, from what you just said, you, you are instituting the staff recommendations or in, in the building, you're just asking for what we would like to do with board meetings.
That's correct.
That protocol sounds fine to me for meetings.
I'm getting a lot of thumbs up here. I'm getting a lot of thumbs up here. Katie, you're self-quarantining and you too, Philip, there. So if you're okay with that, then we'll, we'll make that happen. We'll get that out on our website. We'll get the publications in place. We'll put the signage up. We'll rearrange the room. Again, what we do on an operational level is separate from what we do in the public outreach segment there, especially in these public meetings.
Right. I, in the past, we've put a time on when, how long this would be instituted or, I mean, I, I don't, I'm obviously not a doctor nor a have any idea, but this fourth wave of COVID is, could last for how long? And we don't know. And are we going to play it by ear? Are we going to say it's a month or three months or what?
In my previous community, we, we started this when COVID first kicked off by declaring an emergency and we declared an emergency for a certain, certain time period. And that time period got renewed for the next year and a half. I'm of the impression that we play it by ear for now until we get some indication that the, the infection rate is either leveling off or going down. This is going to be a fluid, fluid protocol. Depends on, you know, the nature of this, of the infection. So if you want to establish that we'll do this for 30 days, that's just two public meetings. If we want to do it for three months, you know, we can do that, but then we'd have to come back and revisit that.
I like the idea of basing it on the cases that they start to level off, to drop off.
Yeah.
Yeah. I am not a big fan of the virtual meeting platform, so I think you lose a lot of that person to person, but at the same time, we have this increase happening. So we need, I would agree that we play it by year and not set a long time period.
Well, we'd like, we all want to be back to normal as quickly as possible. And just like the first and the second wave of COVID, it hits hard and it dies off slow.
So it looked like it is tonight where members that were healthy and wanted to come would sit here, but we would all have our ass on.
Correct.
Like last time, we extended the desk out.
Right. Yeah.
Keep the space.
I think that's right. And that way, if someone is uncomfortable or feeling extra vulnerable, they don't have to come, but still participate.
Well, some of the things on the staff level that we're doing is, for example, in public works, you know, we're not allowing two public works employees to travel in the same car. There'll be precautions of, you know, cleaning the vehicle before and after. We're looking at our staff proximity within, within, with Beth gone. Antoinette has volunteered to move down to her office to give us a bit more separation. We'll be wearing masks, except when we're by ourselves in our office, then we can remove those masks. But when we interact with the public, and I think I might have included the board of that communication about the protocols that, that we're going to require all of our staff to wear masks when dealing with the public. I've also encouraged employees who are not vaccinated to get vaccinated. We have no mandate, either at the federal, the state level, and I'm not willing to put a mandate in at a staff level either. I think that gets into some constitutional rights there, so. So it's about precautions, in my opinion. Thanks for putting your mask on there, Katie.
I've been keeping my distance. Okay.
I, I'm thinking that we could, you know, keep it enforced until we get to a one-week case rate of maybe 150. I'm looking at the numbers.
That stay wider, Eileen?
That seems pretty high.
Stay wider.
That's 150 per 100,000. That's how,
Yeah.
how it's rated on the dashboard. And right now, we're, this morning, we're at 1,348.
And that's even an increase over what I've been monitoring as well. You know, a week ago, when I put out the initial guidance, the email, we were averaging, Grand County was averaging seven new cases a day.
We had 46 on Monday.
Forty-six on Monday, so it's climbing exponentially. So my thought is, let's keep everybody safe.
It'll probably fall that way also.
Okay, then we'll institute those policies. We'll get the guidance out. We'll make sure we publish that. We'll include that language on our agendas as well that we publish, so. At least anyone who's interested in attending the meeting will know how to attend virtually.
So the next question with that is Safeway. Last time around, didn't, did we mandate that Safeway?
We left it up to the merchants.
What's that?
We left it up to the merchants.
Okay.
But we supported anybody that had a mask mandate, so.
Thank you. The second item I wanted to bring up, I did send an email out.
Before we do move on from that, it's just interesting that the, the school board, our school board just, just said that kids could go to school optional with wearing a mask or not. So there you go.
And they did that from.
I'm sorry, what was that, Eileen?
They did that during a Zoom meeting, so it's kind of ironical.
Right, yeah. They, our, our school board voted to allow our kids to go maskless in school if they'd want, while not allowing anybody to go to their, their meeting, so.
If that's all, I like.
I'm just saying, we try to keep, we're not going to be able to keep everybody safe. I mean, this is, it's not going to ever happen because of, you know, things like that. So anyhow. What's your next item?
The next item, I sent an email out. The Colorado Municipal League is looking for nominations for their executive board. They have openings beginning in July of 2022. They need representation from small and medium-sized communities, and we qualify as that small community. And I wanted to ask the board if, if there's any interest in one of our trustees of maybe being part of that CML executive board. It's, I think it's a two-year commitment, but you'll be meeting with other board members on a regular basis, determining the direction of the advocacy and, and legal jurisdictions and, I'm sorry, legal discussions and legislation being proposed. I think it's a great opportunity. I don't believe that Grand County has any representation on the, on the executive board. I think it's a great opportunity so that our voice could be heard and be part of those discussions. And I don't know what the time requirements are. I believe it's, it's at least once a month. It might even be twice a month that they meet. I believe it, they have virtual options as well. But it's, it's a big responsibility. It's a big commitment, but I wanted to put that out there to the board. The reason I put that out there to the board, because if the board is not, if there's no one from the trustees or the mayor that wants to be part of that, city managers can also be part of that. I have an interest in doing that, but I would need your board support. Whether or not you think that would be a good place for me to, to, I know your previous manager was sudden the border, was it on cast?
Circe.
Circe. Throughout most of his career. I have worked with CML for the past five years, worked with their executive board. I've been part of the policy committee. I know their executive staff and I follow their, their legislative action pretty heavily. So if there's no rec, if there's no trustees that would want to do that, I would ask if the board would consider nominating me.
Eileen, you've always been active in CML. What are your thoughts?
Um, well, I'm on the policy committee and that's what I prefer to stay on. If, if Ed thinks he can work it into his, his timeframe and not take away from town business too much, I would, I would be in favor of that.
I always thought it was a pretty good trade-off to lose a staff member to that type of organization, kind of like we had Jeff with Circe for so long, because that organization was so important to our town's business. And from what I know of CML, I think that'd be even more valuable to have that type of representation on the executive committee. So I wouldn't have any problem with that, losing some time. There's limited time in your day, but I think that that serves the town just as well as time that he's here in town hall, so.
It's just a matter of scheduling for me, you know, you make those combinations for that. But there is some off-duty time as well that goes along with that. Again, I, if the board's not supportive of that, I would completely understand. I know that I've only been on the job for six months and you're still kind of evaluating how well I'm doing here. We're going to have that discussion in two weeks in another executive session. But the nominations close on the 17th of January. That's when you could get your application in or your letter of intent. It will require a vote from the board to support that. And then there's a document that we'd have to submit with that, and I would probably, I think that I would need the mayor's signature on that as well.
I support you in doing that, especially if it's, you know, maybe it's some of your town time, but your personal time also. Because if it was a board member, it would be their personal time. And you want to do it and you've been involved, it could be a real asset for all of Green County.
Well said.
You have an objection? Go ahead.
But none of the board members wanted to be on this. Is that what I'm getting?
I haven't heard anybody speak up.
I hope to one, one day I'll have enough experience to do something like that, but not yet.
She's a logical person, but she said she's having a policy.
That's the first thing that I, I thought of was Eileen when this was brought up, so.
Okay, so do you need a motion then tonight, just to make the timing of this work?
You know, for the timing, I would like to have a motion to support my nomination to the executive committee.
I would move to support the town manager at Cannon's nomination to the executive committee for the Colorado Municipal League.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Any other updates?
I, I was wondering, we've had the town manager evaluation pushed off from several meetings. I thought it was going to be at this one. I was just wondering when it's coming up.
It's going to come up in two weeks. We made a determination that, that because of, we already had three executive sessions. The agenda, we actually pushed several items that were going to be on tonight's agenda, because the original agenda looked like it was going to last about 12:30 or 1 o'clock. So we pushed off those non-critical ones to the January 19th meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I'll have something brief. So Ed and I and Sarah, Isaac, are going to be attending this sustainable community planning session that's hosted by the Chamber, right, and Town Water Park. So if any of you board members have any little pearls that you want to share with me about little visions for sustainable community, I could take some notes and have that to share also. That's it. January 14th.
Anybody else?
That's Katie speaking, right?
Yeah, Katie Souls.
Yeah, I've got a couple of thoughts. I, I think this Christmas holiday is, I really want to thank the local employees that muscled their way through it. Pretty dang sick. And a lot of key employees and a lot of key businesses were sick. But I think that what this is, this is kind of a foretelling of the future when it's not illness, but it's, and it's already happening, the shortage of housing is causing this type of shortage of employees too. And I've had, I'm gonna, I'm 12 feet from anybody here, so just so I can talk better. But I really think that we've got to look at some more resources for employee housing. The town requested, from the way I understand it, most all their chamber money now is going into employee housing. Because their thought is, and my thought is, and I've heard this thought from a number of community members, we can't continue to attract visitors here if we can't give them a quality experience. And Safeway was empty. There were times when there are no eggs in that store. There were times when there was no food in that store. I know their challenge for employees, challenge of the supply chain, the weather was a challenge, obviously. But there are people that are, that came over Christmas that I'll bet you won't come back. And, and that's, you know, that, 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 I think is more important than getting more people here. We have to make sure that the people that come here have a quality and enjoyable vacation. So I think we should look at revenue in the chamber. We should also look at revenue from our lodging tax. Our lodging tax 100% goes to marketing this community. And I believe that marketing this community also includes making this community marketable. And so I think we've got to have a serious discussion in this county about that 1.8% tax going to improving the quality of life here, including building employee housing. That has to be one of the revenue sources. And without employees, nobody's going to be coming. And the employees that are here are not going to come back and work here again, are not going to stay in our community because it's a damn hard place to work when you're pulling these long shifts. And then the reward you get for that is homesick. So I really want to give kudos to everybody that muscled their way through Christmas. I wasn't one. I hit out my house. And I have that privilege from being older and muscled my way through enough Christmases around here, but still, we've got to look, we've got to work hard on that. And I think one of the other revenue sources that I brought up before, and I think we really have to look at, is I really believe we need to reinstitute the fee for, for building. Fee, the $4 per square foot fee on building, and the way you get out of that $4 square foot building fee is you include employee housing or you do deed restrictions on the property. So that ordinance, we had that. I really believe we need to bring it back again. I'd really like to see it on the agenda.
Well, Andy, that failed last time we used it. That's my only issue with that $4 square foot. We built up the funds and we never did anything.
Well.
And I think it's unfair to harsh people that are coming in now to develop versus the people that have been here since 1970.
Let's have that discussion on a board-wide basis. Let's bring that discussion back to the community so we can talk about that. So if we can't go backwards, obviously, Parnell, I mean, that's not possible. I had a conversation with, during the Democratic Party meeting, this last one, we have both Judy Mobley and our new state representative through redistricting Julie from Summit County about, let's get state legislation in for the transfer tax, for the real estate transfer tax to be permissible in statutory communities. Any community that wants to vote it in, let's get the state statute, and we can make that a community discussion as well. So, but, you know, I'm, we're going to have some really good employee housing discussions coming up, I know. But I think it needs to be a really diverse revenue source. We can't depend on just a mill levy. Mill levies are so important for community infrastructure, for water, wastewater, everything else that's here already to maintain the existing community. We need to look at other revenue sources to fund employee housing. So, and Parnell, I really appreciate that you've been really strong on, on bringing money into employee housing. We had that discussion even about the arts committee. But we have to be realistic about the amount of money that this is going to take to really seriously address this problem. So that's all I'm saying.
I'm glad you brought that up. Michael and I had a discussion today because on the January 19th board meeting, we have a work session on affordable housing, workforce housing. And one of the things that we talked about specifically was the impact fees, other diverse funding streams. We have some regional initiatives that we're going to be updating the board on. For example, the regional housing authority, we've got some local initiatives, and one of those will be talked about in executive session following this. And we've also got, I think it's going to be a good discussion in two weeks, but we're working on that agenda now and doing the research that we can have a a robust discussion about affordable housing, funding for affordable housing, and a robust discussion about affordable housing, funding for affordable housing, and so.
And, you know, Winter Park, I think, is implementing or has implemented something with their water fees, where they're going to add fees to other, to the general public, and then if you're employee housing, your fees will go down for your water and sewer. Make it easier, more affordable for people to do employee housing. There's a lot of options that we can look at. Yeah, but it's going to be a tool.
This is getting further than an update, so.
Yeah, sorry, but thank you.
Hey, did you have anything else, Andy?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion?
I'm ready for an executive session motion. Okay.
Ready for that?
I move to enter into an executive session for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. Next part.
Yeah, thank you.
For the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section twenty-four six, four oh two, four B, and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four six, four oh two, four E, regarding litigation, including town attorney Ken Whit, Kent Whitmer, town manager Ed Cannon, town clerk Antoinette McVeigh, town planner Catherine Trotter, town assistant manager Michael Brack.
Is there?
For, excuse me, just for logistic purposes, we were before, trying to put all the executive sessions under one motion. So the way we've got this worded out here, does this indicate that we have to come out of executive session and then take another motion to go back into executive session?
It does, the way it's on the agenda.
So we could modify that by making the second motion for the other executive session. That way, we don't have to come back, turn on Zoom, turn it back off, do the recording and so forth.
You want to pass one motion at a time, though, or make, yeah, should I make the second motion?
I would, I would vote on both motions.
Okay, I would, I would also like to add to that motion, separate executive session, but under the same motion, I move to enter into an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject negotiations, to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four six, four oh two, four E, to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest under CRS Section twenty-four six, four oh two, four A, regarding land acquisition. This executive session would include town attorney Kent Whitmer, town manager Ed Cannon, town clerk Antoinette McVeigh, town planner Catherine Trotter, and town assistant town manager Michael Brack.
I'll second both motions, both executive session.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then Kent, if you can give our attorney-client privilege, speak, would be great.
You bet, Mr. Mayor. So it's my opinion as the town attorney for Frazier that the matters that are going to be discussed in these two executive sessions are attorney-client privileged and do not need to be recorded.
Perfect, thank you. And then to the public, we're going to put you into the waiting room, and then we'll open, come back out of executive session and finish off our agenda.
Says he can't see the mask, just in case. Hold on. In case somebody sees me without a mask. Okay. I'd say you can leave your mask up.
Okay, are we back, Michael?
We are, we are back, Mayor.
Okay, great, thanks. We've just left, left our executive session. Ed, can you please give us an overview?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This next item on the agenda will be for the board to vote on approval of a contract offer that was made on a large parcel of land that would help support our affordable housing initiatives with the town. Accompanying this, our, this offer are, is a condition that is based on a state-sponsored grant. It's called the Operation Turnkey Grant, which will pay for up to eighty percent of the purchase price of the land. We had a good discussion in the executive session, and now we'll be looking to the board to make a, a vote to ratify that offer.
Okay, great, pretty exciting news. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. I approved, I am moved to approve the contract that has been presented to the board for acquiring land subject to adjustment of dates that the town attorney feels are appropriate, and also authorizing the mayor to sign this contract.
Somebody want to give a second?
I second it.
All right.
And I would just like to add, it's a large piece of land for, for affordable housing. Large piece of land for affordable housing. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Exciting, exciting news.
Drew, tears of joy, it's an aye. So awesome. So awesome.
Okay, anything else from the board? We are now at the stage of a journey.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
My job.
Good night, everybody.